Going to convene the workshop at 7:00 PM on May 6th. What I do need from a Board of Finance member is for us to recess our workshop, and then we will move on to the public hearing.
Geraldine, give me a second. I just got to unmute the board members.
Thank you. Are we still unmuting, Jason?
I've got most of them. I haven't seen Bill sign yet. And I haven't seen... It might just be Bill that I'm missing on. I'm sorry. There's a lot of people here that I need to sift through.
Yeah.
But you have enough board members to conduct your business.
Okay, so could I have a motion from one of the board members to convene the workshop at 7:00 PM to recess the workshop? Sorry.
Geraldine, it's Barbara Petano. I make a motion to convene the meeting at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Karen Christensen, I'll second it.
Okay. And then we need a motion... Well, we need a motion to recess to the public hearing.
Karen Christensen.
From the Board of Finance, sorry.
Karen Christensen, I move to... I'm sorry, you may forget.
I'm sorry, recess to the public hearing.
Okay, I'll move that we recess to the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Tom Lantner, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tom Lantner, Board of Finance. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I'll say your names now that we're on Zoom. Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Tom Talamini? Tom?
He's muted.
Jason, can you unmute Tom? And Bill Stein?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, Tom, thank you, Tom Talamini, Board of Finance. It's going to be, we're going to have a few hiccups, folks, with so many people on the Zoom meeting. So bear with us. We will get to where we need to go. So I am... And do we have everybody? So I'm going to convene the public hearing first. And I, at May 6th now, at 7:05 PM. And I am going to do attendance just to make sure the board members are unmuted. Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lantner? Tom, you were there.
He's muted.
How did he end up muted again? Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
This is Jason. Bill's having technical problems. He's working on it.
Okay.
Can I just, Geraldine, could I just ask that Board of Finance members not re-mute themselves? Do not mute yourself?
Okay, everybody that is a Board of Finance member, stay unmuted. Jason will be doing the muting and unmuting, okay? And Tom Talamini, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we are going to begin the public hearing with a very quick PowerPoint. Are you able to do that for me now, Jason, or are you helping Bill with his technical difficulties?
I can do it. Just give me one second to pull it up.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. All right, so the first slide is just showing us our budget growth over time. Where we were at FY '16. Where our amounts were, the town in blue, the BOE in the kind of orange. And then FY '17, a slow growth, to FY '18, to FY '19, and to current. And then it brings us to where the proposed numbers are for the town at $16,597,848. And the BOE at $24,600,000. This is a projected expenditure by category, and I've got to get rid of these pictures. My thing over here. There we go. All right, so as you can see, in the blue area, it is 4% for the administration total of expenditures. 10% for public safety. 60% for our infrastructure. 2% for our community service. 13% for general government total. 5% for CIP debt total. And 60% for the BOE. That is the projected expenditures by category for this budget. This is the FY 2021 projected revenues. On this slide, it shows our local revenues and state revenues. You will see on this projected revenue page that we have used $750,000 from the general fund balance and put it in as a revenue source to mitigate the effect of the tax increase on the taxpayer. This is the added appropriation screen. This will show where added appropriations have been given over the last five years. Not only do we do the budget process, but throughout the year, there are additional dollars given to each different department when necessary. So in, as you can see, the added appropriations over the last five years. 18% of our added appropriations went to public safety. 11% to town property. 24% to community service. 3% to administration. 10% to public works. And 34% to Board of Education. On this slide, it will tell you some of the significant budget changes the Board of Finance made. On the town government side, we reduced $60,000 from the Broadbrook Fire Department. We reduced $200,000 from road improvements. We did not add the requested new PD data manager. The libraries were reduced on their increase by $17,500. Hazardous waste was reduced $20,000. Capital improvements were reduced $565,000. The assessor was reduced $32,000. And medical insurance reduced $244,000. On the other side is the Board of Education side. That has changed some. It now has only been reduced by $287,315. We anticipated the Board of Finance, the reduction to the requested increase, to be made up by the healthcare, which was conservatively should have been flat due to the First Selectman's 2.0 healthcare plan that was rolled out. That is a significant savings on both the town side and the Board of Ed side. And everyone should have gotten an email from the superintendent that these schools did sign on to this plan Monday. So there was a significant savings. The Board of Finance also felt that the 10-year trend on the transportation contract was on the higher side and a little overbudgeted. And actually, with the Governor's Executive Order 7R, the Board of Ed will be able to renegotiate all their transportation contracts. So there should be significant savings, hopefully. Cafeteria has been losing over $100,000 every year for at least the last four years. And it is critical that it be managed and brought to a much lower figure than budgeting the $120,000 loss every year. The Board of Finance is going to hopefully establish, with the Board of Ed, a rollover fund that will be discussed tonight in our workshop, allowing the BOE to keep up to 2% of their budget from this year and roll over to next year. Another spot that was noticed was to decrease summer custodian hours if possible and manage summer work now while schools are closed, but the custodians are there. There was some more, but these were just a few key points to bring up. And right now, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Barbara Petano, a Board of Finance member, who is going to share some of the communication that we've received over the last couple of weeks. Some are difficult because a lot of us have been getting phone calls, not only just emails, phone calls and things like that, but she tried to kind of put everything into some buckets so that she could do a brief overview. So over to you, Barbara.
Thank you, Geraldine. It's Barbara Petano, Board of Finance. We received via email a total of 40 pieces of correspondence in the last several weeks. 14 letters were specifically supporting the total Board of Education original proposal of a 6.8% increase, $1.6 million. 13 were from current students, graduates, parents, and a former coach, all writing in support of school sports and emphasizing the importance of leaving sports in the Board of Ed budget. Two letters came specifically from the Broadbrook Elementary nursing staff, requesting that positions not be cut with very strong reasoning behind them. One letter that we got also had a retraction after the writer had reached out to the First Selectman. And it was explained that the Board of Education budget was increasing by $680,000. And that the requested, the original requested increase was reduced, not their funding, from year to year. And that at the same time, the Board of Education budget request was reduced by $900,000. The town side was reduced by nearly $2 million. And also, I think it's important to note that it wasn't the Board of Finance that's making recommendations to specific programs. We don't have the authority to do that. We only make recommendations on the total dollars. Nine letters were received that either agreed with the 2.85% current proposed increase or recommending a zero increase. Most all of those letters cited the current situation. There was one quote that I felt kind of summarized. Said, "Any budget that calls for an increase in spending could be seen as insensitive in today's situation." Two of the nine letters suggested... Two of the nine letters that had agreed with either the proposed minimum increase or recommending zero made some recommendations regarding teachers' increases to either forego the increase as well as recommending furlough days. And it was, both of those came from former educators. And they had indicated that that had been done by the unions in the past and was something that we should look at. One letter was looking for the addition of collection of bulk waste at a drop-off site or curbside, which was apparently cut several years ago. And there was one letter which had some, I felt some good recommendations within the Board of Education budget review. It had some strong opinions, but quite frankly, it also had some rude suggestions as to potential ulterior motives on both Board of Finance and Board of Education. As this wasn't signed, it wasn't followed up on. So that's my summary.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, so now we are going to move on to the public hearing part of this. Now, there are also people on phone calls. So it's going to be, and there are at least four pages on that. So what we're going to ask that you do when we hand it over to you. We're going to ask that you use the hand at the bottom of the screen. There should be a place where you can raise your hand. So, but please remember that there's a lot of people, so it's going to take Jason a while to get to everybody. We are going to have to do the three-minute rule again, too. So, and probably with the amount of us, I think we're only going to be able to do everyone talking once. So with everything that was said in the PowerPoint presentation, the budget this year is 2.52% expenditure increase. The Board of Ed at this time will see an increase of $681,000, which is 2.85%. The town will see an increase of $292,849, which is a 2.85%. With the use of the $750,000 fund balance, it will be a 2.12% tax increase, which will translate to a .8 mils, making the rate 34.63. So now we will open it up, and like I said, please use the hand raising, and then we will get to the telephone calls. That will be a little more difficult. So Jason, I am going to let you go with the hand raising and start to pick as it goes. So if you would like to speak, please, hi, Bill, please raise your hand.
So the first hand that I see up is Mary Ann and John.
All right, and please announce your name and your address so that the secretary can document that, please.
Hi, it's Mary Ann and John. Our last name is Lewinskis. We're at 60 Crested Road in Melrose. Did she get that?
Yep, she'll stop us if she doesn't, so go right ahead.
Perfect. Well, I happen to be one of those teachers that wrote in. I have been an educator for 25 years. And I guess my concern was when a town, let alone a country, is under pandemic and people are losing their jobs and not knowing how they will pay their bills. It concerned me that the educators in our town will be receiving an increase in their salary of 4.25% for next year. I thought that was kind of an outrageous amount. I happened to be in a district way back in a recession time when they asked us to give our salary increase up for the current year. The teachers were more than willing to do that. And we helped out the budget and the budget process. And at the time, we were doing about 185 days. And they gave us two days back to compensate for not getting a raise. So just being part of that process, I can tell you, it was not that difficult to live on the same salary I made the year before. And I felt like I was really helping the families in my school district. And just looking at the budget, I felt that it would be a town savings of $623,271 that I felt could really help the budget and sort of keep where the Board of Finance is at right now, at that 2.52 or with that fund balance, to be at the 2.12%, which I think will help every family because, from what I hear, there's a lot of people out of work at this time. So we are in agreement with the Board of Finance currently, right now, with what they have. And I think if you ask the teachers and the union works with you, I really feel that they would be glad to help the families here in our town.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jason, next?
Nate, next is going to be Kate Carey-Trell, but just give me a second to find her.
My good. All right, this is Kate Carey-Trell, 28A Folkestone Road in Broadbrook. I would like to share my support for the proposed IT/communications position in the Police Department budget. That position is something that the Police Department needs to, needs that would make our police officers more efficient and effective. The position is designed to cover and reduce dozens of tasks Patrol and Administration are covering on top of the regular duties at this time. Will help with overtime, even if that can't be easily quantified. The position also capitalizes on a new software operating system using predictabilities. I think the Board of Finance should support this request by the Police Department, in the Police Department budget. Concerning the school's proposed budget, although we have recently found out that there will be some grant funding, the school district will be able to roll over into next year and grant money to deal with some of the COVID incurred costs. I would implore the Board of Finance to consider raising the education budget. At 2.85%, the budget won't cover increasing costs the district is facing. The Board of Education reviewed the budget presented us by the school administrators and the superintendent. It included items parents requested to be considered, such as including JV sports after fundraiser last year and implementing a few middle school sports to start a new program next year, which has been requested for a number of years by families in our district. The budget also includes supports for social workers, increased nursing staff, tutors, and intervention services that we need in our district. It stated on the back of the flyer sent by the town, "Four out of the last eight years, the Board of Ed spending increase was at 2% or less, which does not cover cost increases for salaries, transportation, and utilities. The town needs to better support the education opportunities for students in town, or parents will continue to choose their send children to other schools." Please remember, the school budget also pays for students to attend VOI programs and magnet schools through tuition payments made to those schools. I would rather see our program supported and improved upon to try to retain students in our town schools. As a member of the Board of Education, I read a number of letters, as Barbara had mentioned. I read at least 25, with the majority of those being in support of increasing the education budget. Please listen to those people who took the time to write letters and share with you their concerns about providing a quality education as well as supporting property values through having better performing schools. I would also ask the Board of Finance, consider implementing the savings account the Board of Ed has proposed the past few years. If there is a surplus in a certain amount, less than 2%, could be set aside to offset costs for the next year, unexpected costs, that this would help cushion the budget if there's a large increase. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, perfect, three minutes on the dot. All right, Jason, next?
Next is going to be Will Parks, followed by Lori Suzick.
Mr. Parks?
Sorry for the delay. Can you all hear me right now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm Will Parks, 5 Aspen Drive, Broadbrook, Connecticut. High neighbors. First thing I'd like to do is to congratulate the Board of Finance in previously reviewing their work. I have found that, yeah, it's unprecedented times. And by the way, and a couple of people have already alluded to it, the unemployment rate is only going to continue to go north. So, boy, I've heard some articulate people already. You know, more funding for the Board of Education. We all would love to do that. My concern is that this feels like a year that we just need to endure, come together, and get through. That future investments in our education and other work would probably be more appropriate once we get on the other side of this and we have a feel in our town that people are gainfully employed and able to pay their taxes. You know, I think that if we start overburdening people right now, it's just going to make a bad situation worse. Those are really my only comments. Appreciate the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Mrs. Suzick, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Lori Suzick, 15 Morris Road in Broadbrook. And I didn't get to write a letter, but I just wanted to support the school system in any way I can. I just think supporting our schools and the sports increases our property values and draws people to town. My three kids benefited from the school system. They're all grown now. Two are nurses, one's a teacher in the Broadbrook School. And I just think we should invest in our children. And it seems like the school system has been underfunded for a while. And I know our test scores are probably one of the, some of the worst in the area from what I see every year. And I just think a strong school system draws quality people to town. And I just know a lot of people that wouldn't move to this town, and the first thing they say is, it's the school system. And I have to agree, the test scores just aren't good. I think we need to invest in our kids. And if we can put a little extra in the school, bring back the sports, and do anything we can, it's money well spent, and that's all.
Thank you. Jason?
I don't, at first blush, I don't see any other hands raised at the moment. I, one just went up. Andy Heath just raised his hand, so let me unmute Andy Heath. And then Sarah Musco will be next. Andy, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, Jason. Andy Heath, 15 Steeplechase Road. First, I want to say that I hope everyone out there is doing well. And in my lifetime, first time this kind of an event has occurred. And it's troubling and tough for everybody, and I hope everybody's doing well. I'm, I just want to say I'm a little disappointed that we will not have a chance to vote on the referendum this year, but I truly understand the circumstances and the reasoning for it. So I'll just make that comment and get beyond it. I realize the Board of Finance has had a tough job this year. But I'm disappointed that they've opted not to put any monies into the budget for the Warehouse Point Fire District. And originally, I had thought that they were going to cut the school budget more than apparently they have. But it's still in very much in support of the school system. The Warehouse Point Fire District issue needs resolution. But I do realize that it's not the Board of Finance that has to do that. I know the Board of Selectmen pulled out their recommendations just prior to sending the budget to the Board of Finance. But I think the Board of Finance can do it. At least acknowledge the inequity of the current situation, include some dollars in the budget, and have the town share in at least a portion of the cost. It's going to have to happen eventually, hopefully sooner rather than later. So starting now makes sense to me. Without any added dollars to the town budget, the residents of the Warehouse Point Fire District will be paying 1.7 mils more than the Broadbrook residents. Even if some money is put into the budget for the Warehouse Point Fire District, the Warehouse Point Fire resident, Warehouse Point people will still be paying a higher overall tax rate. At least those of us in Warehouse Point would take a bit of comfort knowing that everybody is kind of sharing in the, in the pain. As far as the school budget is concerned, I, I would not like to see as much reduction as there is. I think that there's need for support of the school system and the, and the teachers and the activities and the sports and the Spanish clubs and all the other activities that are involved in the school system. And I hate to see anything cut. And I'm, I was originally thinking that it was like almost a million dollars cut in the budget, which it was published in the documentation. I hope that's changed now that they've got the insurance situation straightened out. But I am strongly in support of a strong and...
Andy, it's three minutes.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me, Gerald.
Thank you, Andy.
I didn't realize I was going that long.
That's fine. Any show of hands that... Oh.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a list that's forming. So it's going to be Sarah Musco, followed by whoever is using the Blaschuda handle. I'm not sure if that's Mr. or Mrs.
Okay.
So Sarah, you're up.
Sarah Musco, Selectman, and 25 Maple Avenue. I am at work, so I do apologize if... I am at work, so I do apologize if the phone rings. I just wanted to thank the board for all that they do and thank them for serving. I know that it is very time consuming and not an easy board to serve on, so I'd like to thank you for your service. I know that you have a difficult task ahead of you this evening. Seeing that you will be adopting the budget and that there will not be a vote this year, so I do respect all that you're doing. And I hope that you will strongly take into consideration the comments that you've received. I was fortunate enough, fortunate enough to be involved in receiving some of that correspondence. And just wanted to remind you, you know, that you do serve the community and you were elected by the people, so I hope that you will strongly. Consider those comments and I wanted to thank everyone who did take time to submit comments and. It's great to see so many people on this call, on this Zoom meeting this evening, taking interest. So I just wanted to thank them for their participation and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Sarah.
Next will be the, I'm sorry, I'm killing the name, the Blue Shada email or name followed by Marie De Souza.
Thank you, Jason, it's Joseph Luda, five Pierce Lane in Broadbrook. I just want to thank all of you for all of your hard work and just want to say that I fully support Kate Carrie Troll and everything that she said. I feel that when things are cut, they seemingly never come back. And if four, if it was, as it was mentioned earlier, if four out of the eight last, last budgets. We barely even reached around 2%, that tells me that we really don't have the capacity to really be bringing things back. We have to work hard to not lose the things we currently have. And as much as everyone is definitely in a hard financial times. As we understand that there always is something going on that's affecting people, whether it's more widespread or less. And I think as we realize now with distance learning, school is going to happen regardless. So we need to invest in that because school doesn't stop no matter what is going on out there and we need to support that and make sure. That we give our students the resources and our teachers the resources that they need, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is going to be Marie De Souza, followed by Paul Anderson. Marie, you're live.
Okay, Marie De Souza, Ken Rice Road, Broadbrook. In your presentation, Jerry Lynn, you indicated that the board of education with them going over to 2.0 for insurance. Was going to save $600,000. By my math and based upon the board of ed meeting that I listened to the other night. Their insurance went down $464,000. So I would like you to take a look at that to see if it's a little bit more savings than the $600,000, because there might be. They also, which is good, they also have $380,000 that they are taking out of this year's budget and moving forward to next year's budget. And then they have a Title I grant money, $160,000. That from the CARES Act that they'll be able to carry over for next year. So I think that's a plus for the education side. And I kind of think if we, we look at those numbers, if you don't have them, you can get them. I think the school is going to be in better shape than what we thought when this letter went out to the public, thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Next will be Paul Anderson, followed by Alan Baker.
Paul?
Paul, you're unmuted. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm. Paul, now you're unmuted.
Okay, I am?
You're good.
Okay, thank you, okay. So, good comments all around. Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. So, I've been trying to follow all of this and we all know it's less than ideal, but we'll do the best we can. I have to say that the board of finance has done an outstanding job of trying to make things work. And make next year function as a town. I would imagine that if you went to every resident, somebody would have some kind of a comment on every single line item there is. And I would understand that, but overall, I think a fantastic job has been done and I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
So I'll go ahead because I think I'm unmuted. Alan Baker, Board of Selectmen and 340 Ry Street in Broadbrook. This year, we were kind of faced with a pretty unprecedented situation and I think. Most of us on the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance really thought it important to keep the budget as low as possible. Because of the situation that we ran and the unknowns that were coming up. And the fact that nobody could vote. I still think that's the right thing to do, but however, I feel that we need to invest more in our schools. Generally, every year, we, I feel that we don't do enough. And I think especially this year with this situation, the more I thought about it. You know, distance learning, this extended period of distance learning. Parents are sure are doing their best and kids are doing their best, but it's not school. And I think we're going to see some fallout from that and I think we need to make sure that the schools are in the strongest position possible next year. To deal with what, we don't even know. What, how far back these kids are going to be, a lot of them are not getting probably. The attention that they do need and I don't care how good the parents are doing, they're not teachers. And this is a long time to be out of school and now they're going to be out all summer long. And I really worry about especially the younger grades being able to retain and stay where they were and not be behind next year. So I do think that we should restore a little bit more money, even with the savings that we've, that we've seen with all the hard work that everybody's done. And the transparency that we're, that we're seeing with these budgets. I still think we need to add a little bit more in to account for that and not count on getting money elsewhere. And making a local investment in probably what I think most of us consider. The, one of the most important things that we can pay for in our town. Thanks.
Next up is going to be email, Democat, followed by Joan and then Ian.
Jason, I think emails.
Yeah, I'm having an issue, give me a second.
Hold on one moment, email, you're still muted, one moment. There you go.
I do not have a prepared question, but just some comments. You know, I have been a lifelong family, a family has been in town for 30, 40 years. I have four siblings, all of us went through the East Windsor High School and the town education system. We all graduated college, I was National Honor Society, my sister Linda was National Honor Society and is a. Just retired principal from Norwich School System. But I just have to say that, you know, our school system, you know, when I graduated, there were 93 kids in my class, I am 78 years old. There were 93 kids in my graduating class. My cousin, who was probably eight or nine years younger, it was up to 136. This past year, 80 to, or 70 to 80 kids graduated from East Windsor High School, what is going on? They're all going to East Catholic because they have no confidence in the school system. And, you know, going to East Catholic, you can probably, you get into any country in, you can get into any school in the country. I know it's a smile there, but I mean, what, you know, why is it this, why are we doing this? Also, just, you know, looking at statistics, we spend as much per student as Greenwich, Connecticut. Okay, and I don't have to tell you about the school situation in Greenwich, Connecticut compared to East Windsor. And I'm a golfer, I was at my golf course and I met a couple of people. That said, you know, they knew of people that, they looked at East Windsor, but no, they ended up moving to South Windsor because of the school system. I think we have a definite problem with the school system. We cannot be spending this much money. How can we only have so few students in the high school? And maybe why are we having a middle school, what about consolidation? I think we have little, we have a fight young, we have theftoms here. Or we have people that are, you know, interested in protecting positions. I think you have to really take a hard look and figure out how can we best consolidate. Our educational system with the dollars that we have and use that to give a good education. I've heard comments that, you know, the, the middle school, you know, probably could be merged in. But I think, you know, clearly, this is a beautiful town, we have beautiful homes, I'm over here in Windsorville. I'm in a beautiful section of town. But it's just, you know, I think we have to do something to improve our school system to be able to get more, more kids.
Email, that's three minutes.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joan, followed by Ian, followed by Christina Norde.
Okay.
Hi, this is Joan Norde, I live at 29 Bar Road in East Windsor. I did write in a letter and I just want to say that. If we don't support our schools fully. We will have no future, the town won't have a future without our children and. It's really important that the school gets the, all the funding that they're asking for. I don't see any reason to cut any of the funding personally, because when you figure it all out, it only comes to. For a person owning a home in the town. A couple hundred dollars a year, their taxes will go up and I know that if. They had to spend an extra 50 cents a day to buy their coffee out. They would spend it, so I think it's important that we spend it on the town and. Put the money back where it needs to go and support all the programs. That have been listed, just as the way it was presented by the. Board of Selectmen. I would like. What, the budget that was presented by the board of selectmen, I'd like to see the whole thing passed without any cuts. Even if my taxes go up, I, I'll pay it. Worth it to me to keep the future of this town. My family's been in this town for many, many, many generations, since the 1700s. And I'm proud to say I'm from East Windsor and I don't want that to change. What I'm asking, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next will be Ian, followed by Christina Norde.
Ian?
Okay, sorry, I was showing up mute. My name's Fran Neal, 153 Melrose Road. And I just want to say, I'm a parent of three kids in the school system. And I have to ask, with the way the budget for the board of ed over the past, basically 11 years. They've been shot down when they are asking for more resources or held to roughly 2%, which doesn't cover salary increases and. You know, basic, God forbid something goes wrong. What's going to be left when my kindergartner gets to high school? Because my eighth grader has already lost. A bunch of things, fourth grade had lost the opportunity to have a band or learn a music, musical instrument in fourth grade. And I just see things going and going and going. And it's not, because as most of you probably know, I am also on the board of education. And I believe that. That budget is, that's put out is what is needed, it's not asking for fluff. And I just, I fear for my kindergartner, what is she going to have when she gets to high school? Because I can't afford to go to East Catholic High or anywhere else and I shouldn't have to. Because. I believe the town should support the school system, so. I, and I, at the same time, I agree with Alan Baker. And I understand that who knows what next year's going to bring, but on the same hand. Who knows what next year's going to bring for the school system either? So to be able to have the money to be able to do things, if we have to. Who knows what the requirements are going to be for social distancing with school going back in the fall. I think we need to fund the board of ed. I think that the people who built the budget in the board of education know what they're doing. Know what they're talking about and I think they deserve the respect. And understanding to at least get something that they're asking for, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason? Next.
Next is going to be Christina Norde, but I'm having an issue. Christina, you're unmuted.
Okay. Christina Norde, Seven Grandview Terrace, I just wanted to say that. I definitely support what Alan and what Joan said. I feel like our school systems this year above probably even other years, probably need more funding. We're not sure what the effects of COVID will be on our school districts. There's a high chance that we're going to have classroom sizes that need to be much smaller. That could mean we need more staff, so. The idea of cutting in a year where we could have a huge increase in need is absurd to me, honestly. So I feel like if we could actually fund the school district in the way that they are seeing where they need, even though. I know we do have that, we've been very fortunate that we've been able to have this consolidation of the healthcare. I think we are going to need extra funding this year. I also think we have to think about the fact that kids are going to need. A very different. Programming going back into school, you're going to have students that, they've been out of school for so long, we're going to have students that just don't want to go back, so. There's just going to be a high need for social workers and other services that we have to be able to fund. So I think this year above all, we really need to fund our school district.
Thank you, Jason.
Next will be Mike and Kathy Paraquelas, followed by Karen Stavlon.
Kathy Paraquelas, 12 Joseph Farm Road, Broadbrook, Connecticut. My son Nick and I were two people that did write in in support of the board of education. Nick is a sophomore in high school, it directly impacts him. He's, he's planning to go to a four-year college, he was concerned about accreditation, he was concerned about getting the classes that he needs to. Be able to attend college in two years. I do have an older son who's going to college, so he sees what he's going through and he's excited for that. We looked at the types of curriculum and teachers and sports getting cut. And, you know, he said to me, Mom, what's going to be left? Good question, he's a 16-year-old, what is going to be left? If we can't support our education now, it just seems like everybody else has talked about Kate and Alan. And Joe, you know, every time we, we're just trying to maintain here, we're trying to keep what we have, every time something gets cut. Middle school sports, JV sports, which my husband and I were very involved in trying to raise money for, they never come back. It's hard to raise the money to keep the things that we have right now in the, in the current school system. Forget about trying to restore things that have already been cut. So my husband and I support education, we support, I put 5%. We support putting money into the education, supporting our kids, everything hinges on that, our, our property values. You know, I want my children to graduate and go to college. And really, when I look at the types of things that are being cut, somebody said, you know, why are people sending their children to East Catholic? My older son went to East Catholic. The reason we send our son to East Catholic is because he gets the opportunities that he's not getting in our town. The reason we send our son to East Catholic is because he gets the opportunities that he's not getting in our town. We support our town. My younger son goes to school here. We want to continue to support our son. I don't want to send my son to East Catholic, but if I see these types of cuts happen, I, I want him to have the opportunities that my older son had. So that's why we're here. That's why we've written letters. My 16-year-old wrote a letter from the heart. He doesn't want to go to a school without sports. He doesn't. And, and, you know, he wants to play soccer in college. He won't have that opportunity to go into a school that doesn't have varsity sports, at the very minimum varsity sports. So yes, I'm in support of the education. I'm in support of our sports program. I don't want to see those things cut. So thank you very much for your, for your time consideration. I do appreciate the difficulty the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed have in this current situation. Our teachers in, in East Windsor have stepped up. They started their online teaching immediately. I work for the Manchester Public School System. We're three weeks behind. Our kids have been learning since day one. Granted, it's only half day, but you know what? It's more than some of the surrounding school systems that took such a long time to get their program up. I applaud our teachers. I'm impressed by them and I want to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Next is Karen Stavlon.
Karen? Hi, good evening. Okay, I want to, I mean Kathy Perakilis pretty much said everything that I, I completely agree with everything she said. What I add to that is I've stood up at public hearings before and I've, I have mentioned that I did appreciate moving to this town 14 years ago with the level of taxes that weren't as outrageous as some of the town I had come from. However, we're, we're far, far, far behind some of the other towns. I would be in agreement to paying more taxes in order to keep the school system at a better, higher level. And it's maybe even for more selfish reasons that I know that it'll keep my value of my home and other homes. You know, who would, I, I still think, who would move to this town if they, if they really heard so much of all the cuts that's going on? So I, that's, that's all I really want to say, that if they're asking for the 5% and you're only giving 2%, that's completely unacceptable. 2, 2 and 1/2, you, you got to meet them a little further than that. And if the mill rate has to go, if it has to go up a little teeny smidgen, then it's got to go up. It's just, that's, that's how it is. We can't keep cutting what they need every single year. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Jason?
Next is going to be Charlie Norde.
Charlie Norde, Seven Grandview Terrace. I thank you guys all for your service. I know it's, this is a rough year. It's not easy being in your shoes this year and having all the weight on your shoulders. I would like to remind the Board of Finance, though, that last November, a good number of them were elected into office to represent the taxpayers of East Windsor. I would also remind them that this is a new group of voters, unlike what we've seen in past years. These new voters turned out in almost entirely new Board of Selectmen, as well as a diverse group of the Board of Finance, who they felt best represented their vision for the future East Windsor. These same taxpayers have reached out to you numerous times over the past few months and tonight about their concerns about education and the unfair taxation of the White House Point buyer district residents. I strongly believe these voters, if they could vote at referendum, would turn your budget down as it currently stands, as be it not for the same reason we have seen in past years. This budget you are currently presenting to the Board of Education is too small and not what the taxpayers, taxpayers want to see. You and the new Board of Selectmen were voted in to make change in East Windsor, a better, brighter East Windsor, which includes making up for years of inadequate budgets. You have received many letters and comments supporting an increase by the majority. If we were voting, the majority would rule. Do your elected duty and give the taxpayers what they have requested. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Next, Jason?
Uh, next hand I see is Chris and Stacy Willie, and they are unmuted.
Okay. I did write a letter in and I'll just read it a little bit from it. I agree with the Perakilises and Fran and Christina and Kate and Charlie. I feel like any cut that we, that if we cut at all what the Board of Education has asked for, we are just doing a huge disservice to our town and our children. I think a cut of any size, anything that we can at least maintain what we have, a cut of any size is going to take away too much from our students academically, athletically, emotionally. After all of this, too, like people said, we don't know what's in store for us in the future, but we know emotionally there's going to be needs that we may not have had before. And I do want, I don't remember who said this earlier, but someone mentioned, why are our kids leaving? Or why, why do we have so few kids here? And we have magnet schools now and we, that are free, or we have to pay the tuition to. We have East Catholic that people can pay to go to. But please stop saying, it's very offensive to me personally, to say that they get a better education there, because they don't. It's not true. Our sons graduated last year from East Windsor and go to WPI and are on the dean's list. And they have peers who went to East Catholic last year and did not get in. So East Windsor provided them with an excellent education for the past 12 years. And they, my son overheard that person speaking and he said, do I need to get on and speak? And I said, if you can. And he went to go write something, but I think he's like me, it's hard for him to speak. But I'm trying to speak for him, too. They got an excellent education. They were involved in many things. If you take away the things that they were involved in, band, government, sports, if you take away those things, then yeah, they might have a harder time getting into competitive colleges like WPI. But our sons had a great education here. And my son, who's in eighth grade, is going to East Windsor High School. And I have no qualms about it at this point, but if we keep cutting and taking away things and he won't have the same opportunities, then I would have to reconsider. But as of right now, I, I defend East Windsor High School and the education throughout the whole system that my kids have gotten. But because I know firsthand that we can, East Windsor can and does deliver what our students need, but we can't if they keep cutting and taking away what the Board of Education is asking for. It's not frivolous what they're asking for. So please reconsider keeping what the Board of Ed has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, at this time, I don't see any hands for the first time.
Are there any? There are four screens, so just give us a minute to see if there's any more hands. Any other hands?
Uh, Jeff Ostrow, you are unmuted.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff Ostrow, Two Rice Street. I just wanted to go back and kind of piggyback on what Charlie said. A few months back, we're doing a charter revision with the Board of Selectmen. We all, most of us here, we're sitting in that room, all opposing it. Nobody on that board listened. Charlie spoke up saying that we had elected them. Please listen to our voices. Voices aren't heard. I think there's been an overwhelming amount of letters and quite a few people here tonight that are speaking on behalf of education, and you guys asked for input. So I'm hoping with this, it gives you the opportunity to give us a larger percentage for the education. Our voices are here. We showed up and we're letting you know what we're looking for. I know you guys have a hard job this year. It's very difficult. But again, we are, we are here. We're speaking out. You've gotten predominantly more letters for than against. And I think it's the same way here with the video chat tonight. So I'm hoping you guys can reconsider and see what we can do to get some to put back in, because I'm definitely for 5%. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands at this time? Jason?
I believe Sarah Andrews has her hand up, but I need to find her.
Okay. And quick question, down at the bottom, when it says chat and for people, does that mean somebody's trying to say something that can't? Because how are we going to do the phone calls if we, we have any?
So you're asking a couple of questions there. Let me look at it. And Sarah Andrews, Sarah Andrews' mic is open, so let me look at it while she's talking.
Sounds good. Thank you. Sarah?
Sarah, Sarah Andrews, 144 Main Street in Broadbrook. There's been a lot of great things said tonight to support the budget, the education budget. And I support our teachers here and the quality of education our kids are getting. We have been at a 2% for 10-plus years. And our senior class right now is kind of the example of where we're at. These kids have had opportunities. Now granted, they didn't have middle school sports. We haven't had as many programs as other communities because we've been at the 2%. But we've raised money. We've worked together to keep things going. I'm just afraid for the future kids coming up will not have the same opportunities even close to what this class of 2020 has. About 50% or more of our graduating class, and I've been keeping the numbers because, yeah, let me tell you, yesterday was a devastating day. And I thank everybody in the community that is acknowledging our seniors and wanting to support them. We appreciate that more than you know right now. But 50% of these kids are going to good colleges. They're majoring in excellent majors and they're proud to be Panthers. We cannot stand at 2% and just accept it anymore. I ask the community, I ask you as the Board of Finance to just please listen to what the people are saying and let's move forward and let's not stay in the past. Let's just move forward and let our kids coming up have opportunities that our kids graduating have had. And believe me, it's, it's, oh, I've lost a lot of sleep over the years, literally, running around, trying to figure out how to make things work. But it's because of the opportunities our kids have had here, they're going to be products of East Windsor and they're going to go and do great things. So, and we have to invest in that. We're at tough times. My household, too. We're all sacrificing. But we got to sacrifice together and move forward and invest where we need to. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Kathy Simonelli. Kathy, your mic is open.
Thanks, Jason. A lot has been said and I'm not going to repeat it. But I do thank Christina and Mike and Kathy and Stacy, Chris and Stacy, Sarah, Kate, I agree with all of them, Alan, Joan. So I won't go back through their comments, but enough said that I, that I agree with their comments. For myself, I'd like to say that first of all, a small school can't benefit from the efficiency of a larger school. And that's the reason for the higher per pupil expenditure. In the last 11 years, we've gotten a 2.28% increase to the Board of Education budget. That's the average over 11 years. That is not enough to cover contractual costs in one year. Certainly not in 11 years. It is why we've lost so many of the programs and the supports that we need. 60% of a town budget for Board of Ed is low, about 10% low. It should and used to be higher to, closer to 70%, which is the national average, 70%. If East Windsor wants to grow, if East Windsor wants to see improvements, if East Windsor wants to see its taxes go down, it needs to grow the grand list. It needs to attract business and it needs to attract families. You cannot do that if you're destroying your schools. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other hands, Jason? Oh, I lost my Zoom meeting.
Uh, I don't see any other hands, but there is one person on the phone we can check with.
Okay. Oops. All right. And how do we do that, Jason, on the phone?
Uh, so whoever is on the phone with a phone number ending, ending with the numbers 174, your mic is open.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is, my name is Mickey from East Windsor, Connecticut. I mean, I'm in Warehouse Point. And, you know, my, my question is this. You know, I am for, you know, the education, you know, being, you know, funded. But I mean, people, you know, are, are working. How are they going to, you know, the taxes, you know, they're not paying, able to pay taxes because, you know, they're unemployed. And so my, my question is, I'm a little nervous. Is our East Windsor senior center, are they going to cut, you know, budget, on the budget there?
Crystal on.
In the public key, we don't answer questions, so it's just, we're input on the budget.
What'd you say? I just want about the budget. Well, I, you know, I really don't, you know, have any, you know, comment. But, you know, I, I'm just hoping that, you know, things do, you know, get, you know, get straightened out, you know, statewide on, and, you know, also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, next is Courtney Severino. Courtney, you're unmuted, or you're unmuted, rather.
Hi, Courtney Severino, 16 Rockville Road. I guess also just like to say that I'm in support of the education system. I have two boys, one in seventh grade and one in fourth grade. One who's benefited greatly from the teaching and all the interventionist through reading and extra help, where I'm not sure where he would be had those resources not been made available to him. My youngest son has also missed out on playing an instrument and also the older one was upset that he couldn't do Spanish. All of these, these things and looking at getting rid of other extracurriculars and interventionists and resources that these kids so desperately need, I think it would be detrimental to continue to not support the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jen Regalia.
Jen Regalia, 64 Miller Road, Broadbrook. Um, I would just like to say that I am supporting as much education funding as we can put into East Windsor school system as possible. We are at a point where we have not been, you know, funding this for a long time. The COVID is a scary thing that's going on right now, but it is a temporary thing. Not funding these stu-, you know, the education is causing people to leave the town. I've seen many people leave the town. I've considered leaving the town, but I want to remember that your home values are directly linked to your school system. So saving a penny here or there is really dollar foolish. And I support having, letting the children of East Windsor have all the other great things that we can give them, that we deserve, they deserve to have as part of the community. And I think that we, as citizens, have voted in November in that regard. So thank you for considering my opinion, but I think it's very important that we support the children of this community and the future of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands, Jason?
Um, I don't see any other hands for the first time. But there are some comments that people have submitted that you might want to read into the record.
Yeah, I'm trying to, but to be honest with you, I can't see them all, Jason. I'm trying to pull it up on the side and I'm not seeing, I see one that says, I'm sorry, I have no audio. However, sports are cut completely out. Say 50 students play sports and those students decide to go out of district at what I'm told is 8,000 per student. That's 400,000. How much is being saved by cutting sports? That's an Amy. Will Parks did say it may have been in the PowerPoint. Was there any residual dollars left over from fiscal 1920? Will Parks did say it may have been in the PowerPoint. Was there any residual dollars left over from fiscal 1920 that is being applied to the proposed budget? And we will go over that again in our workshop. Ian, or Joe Chason said, well, said Karen Stavalo. Kathy said she raised your hand but doesn't think you saw it. And Amy LaRue, again, I think, if you don't support the schools, the town will suffer more than it already has. Listen to those who've been for generations. The town will no longer have that, because no one will want to stay and raise their children, support education, support town's future. Oh, Lou Bulella. I am in agreement with the Board of Finance's decision to reduce the Board of Ed's budget proposal for next fiscal year to 2.85%. I applaud the Board of Finance's decision as in these times of uncertainty and the inability of citizens of this town to vote on the budget proposal. It is not the time for large spending increases for town government. On another subject, it is time to solve the inequity regarding the double taxation of Warehouse Points residents for fire service. I did Miss David Slame, great support here, East Windsor for our education and kids. And I don't know when this one came over, it said, I just Karen Stavalo, which says Emile has his hand up, so is there a hand up?
There is, there is, but it's somebody who spoke before. I wasn't sure how you wanted to do that.
Oh, okay. And I think that's it. I hope I didn't miss anybody. If you have no other hands, go ahead. If, Emile, I don't see the hand up, so. And ML Johnson, I don't know, he just typed LI. I don't know what that means. And so if Mr. Johnson.
I appreciate the opportunity to get back. Yeah, as I mentioned, you know, our family has been in town forever. Five of us, Democrats, we all went through the school system, we all graduated college. Four of us went to UConn. I went to University of Hartford, I got an MBA. I had a very good education. Miss Davy from fourth grade. But I think, you know, the whole thing is, I think it's a misallocation of resources. We are spending as much as Greenwich spends, okay? Greenwich, Connecticut, we are spending per student what Greenwich, Connecticut spends, alright, $20,000,000. We have a misallocation of resources. Something is not right. We probably have too many, too many schools, maybe three buildings should be condensed to two. I think you have to take a hard look at our educate, at our, our physical structure. I think we may have administrators that are into positions that have been in positions for a while that, you know, that do not want to leave their positions, that it's basically, you know, it's a great job and they're making a lot of money. Our, our, our school administrator, the, excuse me, the head of our school, our school department makes more money than that head of Greenwich School Department. Alright, it's, it's crazy. I think, I think we should take a really hard look at how are we spending this big amount of money? And why don't we have, why aren't we trying to get other towns in? Maybe we share our resources, share East Windsor High School with Arlington, or share it with Windsor Rocks. Do something creative and think of how can we get, maybe get more students in to the schools. I certainly, you know, do support a good education, but when we are spending more money per student than Greenwich, Connecticut, and only 70 kids graduated, 70! I went down to the, the, the pool, our town water place there and talked to, know the lifeguards. And they said, how many do we have going this year? We have 70 kids graduating. I graduated 40, I graduated 50 years ago with 93. My cousin graduated with 130. And now you only have 70 kids graduating from East Windsor High School? It's crazy. I think you just, you have resources that are not being allocated properly. And I think you just have to take a look at, you know, how can we use our physical structure? I mean, that East Windsor High School could hold 1,200 students, and how many do we have in there? Probably 200, 300? Probably a school should be moved in.
Emile, you have 10 seconds, okay?
Okay, I think you should maybe move some students in from like the sixth grade into the high school, and maybe get rid of that middle school, and cut down on your administrative staff.
Okay, you're at three minutes, Emile. Sorry. Thank you. I do have a, now I'm losing it, but somebody gave me a note that said, Mr. Johnson said it was a mistake that he typed. Jeff Ostrad just typed 5%. Mr. Park said Mr. Fred Struklin had his hand up. So do you see him, Mr. Fred Struklin?
Yes, I do. One second.
Thank you. You are very low, so if you can get close to your microphone, but we can hear you, Mr. Struklin, but if you could speak up.
Okay. First of all, I support the school system in town. I had five kids go through the school system, the youngest, which ended up with 18 semester hours of college credit when he graduated from East Windsor High. Not through the efforts of the school board, however. It was more my efforts getting the school system to react to his needs, okay? That's important to note. It's very important to note that the school board has to do a better job. That's outside the premise of this current conversation, as far as I'm concerned. They have to do a better job. Okay, so I sent in a letter, it was pretty detailed, and I'm sure you went through it and saw a lot of the numbers that I put in there. There's a lot of things that need to be considered in this unusual timeframe that we're currently involved with. People are not going to have the jobs, UTC is offering un, uh, closeout benefits, basically, that I heard today. So they're, they're basically going to be letting people go on retirement. People are going to be moving out of the state because of that, because of the tax situation. It's imperative this year, I think, that we need to keep our budget as low as possible due to the fact that nobody has a say in the matter except the Finance Board. And, and because of the situation with unemployment and everything else, food lines at the, and what happened to Renshler Field here last week? They had, what, 500 cars in line for free food, because people don't have the income necessary to buy food. So I agree that the school system needs to be looked at, and it needs to be funded. I can't support a four and a quarter percent increase for the teachers when the performance ratings are very, very low. That's my problem. So do your job, Board of Ed, and get a better result out of the school system, and possibly, you know, we'll have better results in town when people want to support it more. I had to fight for what I got for my kids with, with threatened lawsuits for the Board of Ed and everything. And, and they never came about, but they got results. And because of it, my kids did well, but I had to fight for it. So the performance of the Board of Ed needs to be looked at. It's outside the premise of this conversation as far as I'm concerned. But the point is, the community right now is suffering because of the virus situation, and we need to be very careful about where we put our, our funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, there are some more comments, so while you're looking for hands, I'll read the comments. LaShudo said 5% or more make up for some of the past cuts. Katie Zyrus said I support 5%. ML Johnson said results equal more funding. Lori's iPad said I support 5%. Karen says, am I allowed to reply to comments made from other people? Unfortunately, no, we can't have a back and forth, back and forth, but you can, if we have time, comment one more time, but not in a back and forth nature. ML Johnson said, Emile, they just don't want to hear it. Kathy, Kathy said the Greenwich superintendent's starting salary 2019 was 236, 640 annually plus benefits. I'm not sure who this is. It just says from iPad, so they must not have their name on their iPad. It says, I've always supported the school budget. I just don't feel this is the time to raise taxes. Unprecedented times, how many, how many that want to raise the taxes are out of work, have furloughed, mortgages, et cetera. Please take into consideration the unfortunate times we are all, we are in, all in. Lori's iPad, education budget has been bare bones, too long, time to fix it, let's do right for our kids. That is the end of my chat boxes. Jason, any hands?
For the first time, Angelo and Jean Severino, and Karen Stavalo has her hand up for the second time.
Okay, let me, oh, my clock just cleared. Hold on. I'm good.
Angelo and Jean, you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Angelo and Jean Severino. We moved to East Windsor in 2001 as empty nesters. We had all of our three children graduate from West Hartford School System. So we came here to East Windsor thinking we'd be by ourselves. Little did we know that two of our children have moved to this town, and we now have six grandchildren in the school system. So we're heavily invested in their, their future. Somebody made a comment with respect to not having referendums for the budget. It's unfortunate, but it's what the governor is requiring us to do at this point. And I have full faith and credit in the Board of Finance and the Board of Education to see to it that what available funds we have are properly apportioned to the future of our children. All of our kids, all of our grandchildren now, not only eat us out of house and home, but they tell us what's going on in the school system, and some of them are concerned. And, and for these young people to be expressing concerns about their future and where they're going to go and why they can't have music or they can't have athletics is really disconcerting. I don't like paying taxes. Nobody likes paying taxes. But I have faith in the two agencies that are addressing this problem, the Board of Ed, and particularly the Board of Finance. And if their recommendations, I'm sure are based on facts and based on the best interest of the town, and I support that. I would encourage, if at all possible, to increase the budget for the Board of Education as the Board of Finance deems fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. I'm okay in my chat box, Jason. Do you have any? Oh, didn't you say there was another hand?
Karen Stavalo for the second time.
Okay.
Karen, your microphone is open.
Hi, thanks again. I know we're not supposed to go back and forth, but there was some hard pills to swallow that I heard earlier. We are, the budget is at a minimum for administration is, I work in another town, it's a much larger town. We have stripped down to the most necessary amount of administration. The teacher performance is fantastic in our school system. And the results are not always about teacher performance. I want to say that. And I'm, and there have been a lot of wonderful performances, by the way, in our town for scores and, and increase. And one thing I never really understood is why people think you take away money and that's going to help increase performance. I don't understand that philosophy at all. And during this horrible COVID-19 and consideration of budgets, I'm more concerned about actually a year from now. So I'm thinking, wow, if we don't even get to the percentage we're even hoping for this year, next year is another story, another ballgame. But it, that, that's, that's far, that's still one way away. What's happening right now, we're going to feel it more next year. So this year, we have to at least keep what we have and keep it strong because we don't, we really don't know where we're going. And as far as people who have, the school is not the same as when we were in it. There's more needs. You cannot compare, when you compare towns and if the Board of Finance looks at numbers in other towns, you have to compare it to a similar DIRG, which is the demographics region. You don't compare apples and oranges of Greenwich or even West Hartford. I mean, it's completely demographically different, and I'd have to look into those numbers of what we're speaking about per pupil spending. But I can tell you, just from my experience as an art teacher in a very large school system with a different DIRG.
You got about 20 seconds, okay?
Okay, so to just wrap that up, again, taking away money is not going to help at all. Thank you. Sorry. I had to add my, I had to get back in. Thanks, Jason, too.
Thanks. I do have some chats, Jason, while you're looking for hands. There is a question from Noreen that does ask what our superintendent salary is, but we can do that during the workshop. Lou Bella, Bulella, I'm sorry if I'm killing names. On the subject of referendums, I do believe the governor clarified his executive order and said that towns can have a vote if they can do this safely. Am I mistaken? I will, that is mistaken, and I'll let Jason clarify it as we go down a little further. Amy LaRue, okay, does cutting sports lose our accreditation? Then we'll have no students, no town, support 5%. We have sports, we have a sports student that went opt to leave without sports. So much has been cut already. We have amazing school staff working with no budget. Soon we'll lose teachers as well as students. From Fox to everyone, I support the Board of Finance in this decision. I think the problem is money mismanagement on the BOE. Throwing more money at the problem is not the solution. Jase Bowes into everyone, Mr. Fox, you are mistaken. E07HH specifically prohibits them. Thank you, Jason, for answering. Kathy, the East Windsor superintendent's salary is 171K, significantly lower than the Greenwich 236. Jen, I support 5% more, rise up and stand up to the future. Heather, I've written a letter in support of the BOE. Year after year, we have been taken away. BOE, it is time for us to support our schools and students. Thank you. So now, is there any other hands? Because that's the end of the chat box.
Nicole Grzuski for the first time, followed by Will Parks for the second time. Nicole, your mic is open.
Nicole Grzatzky, 357 Scantic Road. Hi, everyone. I'm a current high school senior. This budget is really important to pass. Performance doesn't always show everything. As a student with test anxiety, my performance does not match what the teachers are doing. Teachers have worked with me throughout the past four years, and they have helped me come a long way when taking tests. And the performance does not match what they are doing. These teachers are amazing. They go far and beyond to help their students. As for sports, I know a lot of my friends use sports as an outlet, as an outlet to get rid of aggression as a positive outlet, a positive way to put forth non-positive emotions. So cutting sports from the budget would most likely have more negative behavior in schools because students would lose that outlet. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole just says I support not losing accreditation. Will Park said Bob Leach should go before me. He's had his hand up. However, that works, Jason.
I'm sorry, everyone. There's a million pages to thumb through. Bob Leach, if you want it, the microphone is open.
Okay. Bob Leach, 39 Church Street, Chairman of your East Windsor Republican Town Committee and Chairman of your East Windsor Police Commission. Couple of things I would, would advocate for is, of course, I'm going to advocate for the school budget, of course, I'm going to advocate for the police department budget. Police department budget was cut to zero based on the fact that we finally negotiated on the PD Union contract. That doesn't mean that our needs change at the PD. We presented a reasonable budget. We were 1.99% in our ask for budget increase. That did include a new position. That new position creates a very good efficiency position. It's something that we need. We are going to get it eventually. We have an opportunity to capitalize on this position. So that new position I would strongly advocate for. It's something the Board of Selectmen did approve, cut by the Board of Finance. And then again, at the end of the day, we are moving forward. We are getting past this. This will end, and we will get back to normal. By the end of this month, many things should return to normal for most people, I would imagine. Cutting the school budget to 2.85% I think is short-sighted on the Board of Finance. Unprecedented situation that they're going to face in the upcoming year. I think you really need to look hard at that. And then again. And then again, Warehouse Point Fire District. Here we are, those funds are going to be extracted from Warehouse Point districts only. They're paying about two thirds of all the costs of fire services in this town. And again, the Board of Selectmen, the majority of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance has kicked that can down the road. This is the fifth year again. Disappointed in that. Then again, disappointed in some of the people that we had endorsed for some offices that the current elected officials hold right now. In the coming two years, I'm sure that'll change. But there again, here we are. See, Windsor, either we do the right thing or we do what we've been doing for the past 10 years. As Kathy Simonelli had mentioned, 2.82 average percentage over the last 10 years that we funded the schools. It's ridiculous. It's shameful, really. I could go on, but I'll probably be in, in a bad place. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm done.
Thanks. Jason?
Will Parks, your mic is open.
Earlier, you know, I was talking about, you know, the unemployment that is in the state and that is projected to go up. I don't necessarily share Mr. Leach's optimism that things will turn rather quickly from an economic state in the state of Connecticut. But there was a mandate in our town that all of us had a hand in. And the mandate was for investment. It was for a growth and investment. So to clarify earlier comments, trusting that the Board of Finance has a handle on the revenue that we're going to be taking in. Clearly, in this call, education is at the forefront of an investment that our town needs to make. Now, as far as what is that right number? You know, I don't know. But we all can agree that education is something that needs to be fixed and improved in this town. And, and that is a building stone of, of which other things are going to happen. Building the grand list, getting people into the town. So I, I know I'm reiterating a lot of things that, that other folks have said, but there is the financial reality that again, I'm sure Barb Tino and, and all of her peers on the Board of Finance are kind of balancing because, well, hell, I'd like it to be 10%. What's, what's the financial reality? How much revenue can we generate to support this budget? For me and Joan, you know, who's on the call, she's an educator. We, we would like to see the school system fully supported. Thanks again, Jason and all.
Thanks. Any more hands, Jason?
Yeah, Karen Stavalone for the third time.
Okay, we can't do three time. We're at 8:34. Are there any other?
Yeah, she does have a chat up saying that is for her son.
Oh, then go right ahead. Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, trying. All right, you can hear him, right?
We can hear you.
We can hear you, not him.
I know he's coming. Here you go.
Oh, okay.
Hello. So my name is Michael Stavalone. I'm an alumni from East Windsor High School. And I go to DePaul University. I'm a freshman. And I would just like to talk about the importance of the school budget, specifically with sports. I was captain of my soccer team and swim team my senior year. And I'd like to stress level importance of those, like sports are extracurricular, but they really help students not only perform better in school, but they teach so many life skills that you wouldn't learn otherwise. And I learned a lot of valuable lessons throughout my sports career. I had a lot of fun. I learned how to be a leader. I learned how to work together with other kids. And I know plenty of kids who their primary motivating factor throughout school was to maintain high grades for their sports team, which, you know, could be seen as bad or good, but for some kids, that's all they have. So I, I just like to stress the importance of athletics in the school system. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike. Any other hands, Jake?
John Adamo, John, your mic is open.
Hi, everybody. John Adamo, 60, Reggie Way. I just want to add a little perspective here. My voice is really for more funding for the schools and the education budgets. Quick background, I, I graduated from South Windsor High School, a town over. One thing I can remember is umpiring JV baseball games behind East Windsor High School back in the day. So the thought that there don't, we don't have JV sports or we've cut out those programs is a, you know, hurtful memory. I have two kids who went to school in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. One's actually a college senior, so she's losing on that fun time. So my heart goes out to Nicole and the other seniors who are losing out on, you know, the end of their experiences and school sports that would have taken place. I have a high school junior in East Long Meadow. If he lived through the 2.28% number I've heard quoted from 11 years of minimal funding, I can't imagine what that would have done to his education experience. He certainly, you know, he might too have lost out on JV sports when he was doing that, not to mention all the other programs, music, et cetera, that were in that school system. So when I moved here in 2017, I made that choice to join a town that I thought really had some great possibilities and was good for me. And, you know, I'm happy I'm with the town, but I get concerned when I know that we minimally fund our schools. And I think about the future with regards to property, you know, the impact on our property values and the rest. And so, you know, we got to step up and we got to help our kids and, and, you know, create a place. The, the, you know, the scenic areas of East Windsor are pretty spectacular. And this should be a place in a community that should be attracting new families in. And when I hear stories of the numbers and graduating classes going down, it just has a negative impact for what we're going to, you know, bring forward for the future. So, you know, my vote is just to support to make sure that we're far, far better supporting the schools and the system budgets. That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other hands, Jake?
Not that I see, but there's a lot of, there are a lot of pages. I don't see, I don't see any other new hands. I don't see any other old hands either, actually.
All right, I'll let you look one more time. And if you don't see any, we will move on to the workshop. Have you gone through your four or five pages?
Yeah, I don't see anybody else.
All right, so if we could have a motion to, can you turn the Board of Finance? Speakers on, mics on, so that we can?
There, there are a couple of new comments, Geraldine, you should read while I turn the Board of Finance members on. And you need to move to adjourn the public hearing.
Yep. Once my guys are on, I'll have a make a motion. I'm trying to. Um, okay, I'm going to kind of condense. There's numerous, thank you, Nicole, for speaking, very well said. So there's quite a few comments on that. Jeff Ausstrout, so many pages on Zoom filled, overwhelming support, asking for a larger education. Please hear us. Kathy said 2.28, not 2.82. Karen Stavalone said, she congratulated Nicole again. Nicole said if we lose school accreditation, we lose so much. David's way of sports is important. It keeps kids focused, keeps some of them on a straight path. Important to keep this funded and even expanded. B said, good evening, B. Carrato, when Lizzie Lane, no, it's getting late. Don't want to be redundant. Please support the schools as they're the backbone of our community. We have no idea what the future will hold and we need to be prepared as best we can. All groups need to work together and support our children. Amy said, Chris Kramer, 357 Scantic Road. Why do we want to discourage new people to purchase here with poor school system that offers no sports? M.L. Johnson said, BOF, do not be pressured. Fred Struklin said, I agree that our school system needs to be supported, but the BOE has to improve their performance. That is the end of the comments. All right, so if my board is on, if?
All Board of Finance members are unmuted.
Thank you. If we could have a motion to convene the public hearing, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Or to adjourn, sorry.
I'm going to adjourn the public hearing. This is Bill, Board of Finance.
Is there a second?
Tom Lannister, Board of Finance, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lannister?
Yes.
Barbara Pitano?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talaminie?
Yes.
Okay, and so now if we could please have a motion to reconvene the workshop?
I will be reconvene the budget workshop for May 6th.
Bill Sign, Board of Finance?
Yeah, Bill Sign.
Second?
I'll second Barbara Pitano, Board of Finance.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lannister?
Yes.
Barbara Pitano?
Yes.
Bill Sign? Tom Talaminie?
Yes.
All right, so let's go workshop time. All right, so the first on the workshop, we dependents were all here, communication. We discussed the correspondence. Barb kind of went over that. So on to the budget workshop section where we'll discuss the possible action on establishing a non-lapsing account for the deposit of unexpended education funds from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year to be used by the Board of Education in accordance with CGS 10-248A, subject to any limitations contained therein. So. Who would like to start?
So Geraldine, this is Jason. If I could introduce this, there, there is a general statute that's available for municipalities throughout Connecticut to allow for the, effectively to allow Boards of Education to retain a percentage of their funding from one year and carry it forward to the next. Typically, what happens is at the end of a fiscal year, any unexpended local dollars, whether it be on the school side or the town side, are returned to the town's undesigned fund balance. And General Statute 10-248A allows for the Board of Finance to transfer up to 2% of the, the Board of Education's general fund appropriation to be used at the discretion of the Board of Education from one year to the next. This is something that, that the Board of Finance can elect to do each year. Once the transfer is made from the Board of Finance to this revolving fund for the Board of Education, it is used solely at the discretion of the Board of Education. So it's just like their general fund appropriation in the fiscal year in which it's appropriated. It is the Board of Educations to do with as they deem appropriate. Each year, it's, by you taking an action tonight, doesn't necessarily lock this in as something that's recurring year to year. It's an action that the Board of Finance would have to take annually to transfer any of that appropriation from, from the general fund appropriation to this revolving fund. This year, it would be just shy of half a million dollars that the Board of Education could conceivably transfer from this year to next year. And I, I would think that in light of the school closures that are happening around everywhere now, that there's probably some likelihood that that, they would at least have some, if not all of that amount that they could transfer.
Thanks, Jason. All right, so does anybody have any questions? I mean, it is something that we would do yearly. We've discussed this in future, in other years. I, I think we're, we're going to do it last year and it did not come to fruition. It seems that if there was any year to do it, this would be a year that would be the time to do it. That is my opinion. Anybody else?
I'll make the motion that we set up the, and I don't have the budget because I eliminated Amy's emails by accident. Well, after Jason told me there's viruses and I got rid of it and accidentally got rid of the budget. So the, worked the agenda, so I don't know the proper wording, but I'm moving. We set up the 2% carryover fund for the Board of Education. Bill, Board of Finance, sorry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Tom Lannister, Board of Finance, I'll second.
Okay. Geraldine, of course, the Board of Finance, is there any discussion?
So Bill, your motion just said it was setting it up. It wasn't specific that it was just setting it up for this year?
Going to be for one year.
Okay, just.
This, this is Jason from the Board of Selectmen. If I could clarify that, the fund is established in perpetuity and, and they are allowed to access it as they deem appropriate. The decision to transfer end of year balances from the general fund appropriation into this revolving fund is an annual action.
The fund will always be there.
Until it's depleted. The fund will be there until it's depleted, but annually, the Board of Finance needs to determine whether or not to do that. And if I could just suggest to Bill that he might want to amend his motion to include the statutory reference, which is, if you got a pen, it's Connecticut General Statute. It's 10-248A.
10-242A?
10-48A.
48A. Okay, I'll amend my motion to, to reference to Connecticut General Statute. It's 10-48A.
248A, 10-248A.
248A, sorry.
Like a lot of feedback too, so it's making it hard to hear. Okay, and is there a second to the amendment?
Tom Lannister, Board of Finance, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, any more discussion?
Geraldine, Noreen, I have a couple of questions. As far as the funding portion of it goes, Jason, you may know this better. Is it based on the local funding to the Board of Education? Or is it based on their total funding, including grant money? As far as the 2% level?
Give me a second to read it.
Kind of not clear.
It would be the local money because it speaks to the, the authority making appropriations for the school district and the town doesn't appropriate grant funding. That, that's something that's done by either the state or the feds. So the statute would speak to the local appropriation.
Right, and then if, if we were to fund it this year and they do not utilize all the money that's in that account next year for whatever reason, does that money lapse back to our general fund or does this accumulate year to year?
No, it is a revolving fund. It doesn't, once it's appropriated into this fund, it is the, the discretion of the Board of Education to use it as they will when they decide to.
Okay, so if they don't expend it next year, they can carry over whatever was left in there from this year into the next year?
That is correct.
Okay, and then my last question is, um, and over like the past five years, has the Board of Education had excess money at the end of the year that they have not spent?
Let me unmute Amy. Of course, Amy, are you there? Her camera turned on. Amy?
She's muted.
No, she's not talking.
I don't see her.
I can see her. She's on page two.
Oh, there she is.
Hang on one, hang on one second, Amy. How about now, try it now?
I think it's Amy because the thing is showing her unmuted.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So Amy, would you perhaps be interested in dialing in with a phone?
Yeah. She went back on mute, though.
Yeah, I see that. Amy, how about now? Nope. Okay, so Amy, can you give a, can you give a thumbs up or a thumbs down? If, if the question is, has there been money returned from the Board of Ed over the last five years? There is not.
Thumbs down.
So there's a, there are a couple of things that I think. So there's a, there are a couple of things that I think this year are different. First of all, there are certain services that haven't been provided and therefore haven't been expended because of the ongoing school closures. There also, I've worked with Superintendent DeBarge to figure out how best to manage ongoing expenses while we're shut down and the town is going to be picking up the food costs that the school district has incurred since the shutdown happened, which should free up some funding for them. The thought process behind that is the town has some opportunity to get reimbursed by FEMA for COVID-related expenses, whereas it's unlikely that the school district does. So if it's going to be East Windsor taxpayer money paying that bill anyway, it makes sense to carry that expense on the ledger that has some opportunity to be reimbursed. So between, wherever they are, it's at least an opportunity for them to carry money from one year to another.
Jason, do you know, do you have an estimate of how much that food and service money would be?
I don't. We've been working with Andy Pickett on that, but haven't gotten the information yet.
Any other discussion? Jason, can you unmute? Oh, Amy, can you talk now?
Amy, can you talk?
No, we can't hear you, Amy. I think you're going to have to dial in. Because you are unmuted. You are unmuted. All right, all right, any other discussion on that? All right, so all those in favor of starting the non-lapsing account?
Before you vote, I think that it would be, I think it would be beneficial to the Board of Education members who are on the phone that they understand this vote to establish the fund as a commitment from the Board of Finance, that they would roll that, whatever money is available into that fund. Because I know that was a question that had come up, is whether establishing the fund would actually do anything if the board didn't intend to effectively roll the surplus fund. So I think you need to be clear to them as they try and figure out how to close out the year that if you establish the fund, you intend to park whatever funding you're able into it.
Yeah, I mean, we will all comment on that, I guess. We'll continue on discussion, but I would say I don't think we would waste our time establishing the fund if we didn't have that intention, to be blunt. But that said, as, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're not voting now yet. We're going on saying whether we intend on putting whatever money is left over on the Board of Education side into this fund that we are creating.
Yes, we, I, that's what I'm thinking, yes.
Okay, Tom Lannister?
Yes, I agree.
Barbara Petano?
I agree.
Bill Stein?
100% believe it.
Tom Talamini?
Yeah, I agree 100%. It's a good year for that.
Okay, all right, so now let's make a vote on Bill's motion. All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lannister?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, motion overwhelmingly passes. All right, on to budget discussion and finalizing the FY 2021 budget. Can we kind of make sure Amy's either on the phone or?
Can you hear me?
Oh, my gosh.
Hi, Amy.
You are.
Finally.
Technology at its finest.
I know. This is not the way any of us anticipated doing this budget this year. That's for sure. All right.
So, I'll share that I sent out today updated budget with Christine's new number. The Board of Ed's request is now 4.05%. So the analysis that everybody received today has that number in there. So their original request was brought down to about 900 and change. So your 681 that you're giving them as an increase is $287,000 shy of full, fully funding, 100% of everything they asked for. And I think Jay has the, if you want to see it up.
Oh, great.
Sure, that would be good. Thank you.
So I have, I have a couple of changes to the town side that I'd like to ask the board to make. The good news is, there's two pieces of good news. The good news is after these changes, the town side of the budget will be 1 point, I think 1.98% increase. So we're tightening it a bit more. That savings comes predominantly from the change to our healthcare, the rates that we expected to get from converting to the state partnership fund 2.0 for both the town side and the school side were actually better than we had anticipated, so there is additional savings. So what I, what I would like to do, and I've talked to each of you, but what I would like to do is use some of that savings incurred to restore one of the positions that I had requested on the town side that had been cut, and that's the facilities maintainer in Public Works. Even with
Was it not approved?
Uh, I suppose that's a semantic difference, but either way, it's not, it's not in there right now. So the transfers that would need to be made in order to do that, and how we're doing that is there was a retirement that was not anticipated, that the delta between replacing that person at a lower step and the rate that person was making saved some of the money, and then the others comes from some of that healthcare savings that we had not anticipated. So Amy's going to correct me when I go wrong here, but what we can do is we can take, I think, another 50,000 out of includes, so we can lower our healthcare cost by an additional 50,000 and make this 1548932. And then increase the Public Works salary line by 40,211. And that drops me below 2%.
Is that everything, or was there more?
That's everything.
Okay. With the spreadsheet, I can't see you guys, so go ahead if you have, you know, if you have any comments, questions on the proposal. I hear him.
That means I'm thinking.
Okay.
You said the increase in the increase in the Public Works, which I have found yet, is, how much?
It's increases by 40,211 for a bottom line of 869,667.
Jason, it's Barbara. Does that include benefits?
It does.
Okay, I guess we got to do this line by line. First off, make the motion to reduce healthcare, it was a clinical benefit, so I'll get that go there. Health and life insurance to $1,548,932.
Okay, so Bill has a, Geraldine Corso, Board of Finance, is there a second to?
Karen Christensen, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Geraldine, it's Amy. Noreen is looking to be unmuted.
Oh, okay. Jason, can you unmute Noreen?
Not sure I can, while I'm sharing the screen.
I know, I don't know. I know I can't because you're, you're
Hang on. Oh, jeez.
You know why? She's in the chat probably, and I can't see the chat with the thing up.
Noreen, are you there?
Thank you. All right, so where were we? Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lannister?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, then the motion passes.
And then the last piece of that would be to increase the full-time salary line by 40,211 to a total of 869,667.
I have a question. So in looking at the math right now, we backed out 50,000 to 11, but you're only adding back in 40,000 to 11.
That's correct.
So what's the, what's the difference?
The difference is the delta between what the employee who retired was making at the higher level versus what somebody who was starting at the entry level would be making, which is about 12,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion?
Karen Christensen, I'll move that we increase the Public Works salary full-time by 40,211 to 869,667.
Is there a second?
Tom Talamini, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Can we go back to the math again? It's Barbara. So we didn't know that the person was retiring, but yet we took it out of the budget and then we're adding in the, what am I missing here?
No.
When you, when you framed it up, you said that you didn't realize that the person, we didn't know at the time that the person was retiring, but yet in the original number, we had it being backed out, so I'm, I'm just confused.
Yeah, so what happened was, at the time the budget was put together, the employee who has since retired had not indicated his intention to retire. So that position was fully budgeted.
But in the salary line, Jason, which now says 869,667, I don't remember what the number was, but it was backing, it was a number minus the 50,000. So it looks like, and then when I asked what the difference was, you said it was what the other person was making. So it looks like that person was already out, but
So you misunderstood what I was saying. It's the delta between what that person was making and what the entry point person would be making. It's not, it's not the retired individual's full-time salary. It's the difference between refilling that position.
I understand that, but Amy, can you explain what I'm?
So Barbara, this is Amy, and I'll give it a shot. So basically, the position, a new position was in there for a facilities maintainer. The Board of Finance backed it out. That was the number of the minus 50 to 11. So Jason is asking for you guys to give it back to him, but now we don't need the whole 50 to 11.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. I understand. Then yes. Okay.
All right, so any other discussion? All right, so let's start over again. All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lannister?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
A reluctant yes.
Okay, Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
All right, onward, onward, onward.
Anything else you want to look at?
I don't know. Is there anything you guys would like to, else you would like to look on based on any comments from this evening?
Well, if I could suggest, maybe we look at the town side first.
Yeah, I didn't, that's exactly what I meant.
This is Amy. Rebecca's looking for who's second in that motion.
I did. Tom Talamini.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, guys, that we wanted to go over?
Tom Lannister, Board of Finance. I know the other position that was near and dear to some of us was adding the new position in the police department. I realize we have run out of creative ways to do that, but I'd like to reopen the discussion about that if possible.
Sure, go right ahead.
Do I need to make the motion, or do I just discuss it?
You can do it, you know, do it whichever way you want. I mean, you know, you can certainly make the motion and then somebody can second it and we can discuss it. I, actually, I was just looking at police too, because I, Amy, you know, somebody had mentioned real quick, and Tom, I'm not cutting you off.
No, 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 fine, yeah.
Somebody had said that the police were flatlined and I feel like didn't, you know, were there areas that we went up in other than the salaries that were contractual?
You're asking Amy, or?
Amy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's usually quicker at that than us, you know?
So this is Amy from the Treasurer's Office. Well, you got to remember, there were some swaps we took out. So there was a reduction relating to professional services, but all they did was get moved to IT. They didn't really go away. So overall, their budget did go up in a couple areas, and that professional services was moved to another budget.
Okay, all right. So Tom, did you want to make the motion, or did?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we restore the finances that were asked for, for the clerical police department position.
Okay, is there a second? That was Tom Lannister, Board of Finance, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so is there a second to Tom's motion? I don't think you're getting a second, Tom.
It just seems that the justification for this position would be similar to the one for the maintainer. Having someone do more clerical work and less police work or less DPW work. I mean, the justification would be the same for either position. So to me, it seems like a valuable position to have, but that's my, my take on it.
Okay, I'll put it out there one more time. Is there a second to Tom's motion?
Geraldine, it's Noreen, Board of Finance. I can't second it because I'm an alternate, but I have just a comment on it. And I don't know if we can get clarification or not. I know originally it was in there, it got taken out, and we had a brief discussion about it. And it was said that the police department themselves were okay with pulling that out, that it was something they absolutely needed at this point. It was a nice to have thing. So I'm just a little confused as to the police commissioner is requesting it to be put in, but we were kind of told that the police department was okay with losing it.
Okay, so in reality, we're discussing a motion that doesn't have a second. So is there somebody who wants to second it for discussion?
She can make that as a point of clarification if she wants, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so we don't have to have a second. So in your point of clarification, Noreen, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roberts rules signs. So, yeah.
A point of clarification, if we could get some clarification on
Well, what I can tell you on my end, Noreen, is that I had reached out to the Assistant Deputy when we had discussed it, which I always do, and I did say to him, I said, is there anything, you know, if, if this is like a crucial, crucial position, let us know. Because Because we always work with everybody. And I asked, you know, "Is there something else that we can work on, you know, not funding as much or whatever?" And, you know, he said, "No, that they understood at the time that we were in and, you know, and, you know, they understood the crunch that we were under." So that's how that discussion came about, Noreen.
Thank you.
All right, so Tom, I just... We've discussed it, but I just don't hear that second out there for you.
I have it.
Okay. Anything else on the town side?
Yeah, this is Barbara Petano, Board of Finance. I think I would be really remiss in bringing up again the Warehouse Point Fire District. I get it. I get particularly that this isn't the best year to bring it up, but I feel so wronged that there is such inequity for us to not even make a token gesture to acknowledge that inequity and get a starting point, I think is unfair. And it's just wrong. So I would like to get a starting point. I would like to get them on the budget. I wished that we could have used the fifty thousand in savings that Jason just found. And it just... I think it's a position statement for the town, for the board to be supportive of 100% of the town.
I don't think any of us really disagree with you, Barbara. I would have to say, like, we've discussed this over and over again, and even in the Zoom meeting in our public hearing with people, you know, discussing Warehouse Point. And I'm going to just... My clarification on it, the day that the Board of Selectmen or the town has a contract signed, Warehouse Point Fire, or the time where the two fire departments sign a contract to work together, however it is that the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen, and the fire departments decide how to legally, contractually, figure it out, the day they sign on that line, it is our job to figure out how to fund it. But we have to wait till there is a legal binding contract between whomever they... Like I said, the two fire departments, the town and the two fire departments, the warehouse point, whatever it happens to be, however they figure out legality-wise how to figure it out, then that's where it goes. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. I certainly hope.
Memorandum. I'm not talking about an MOU or whatever. They need a solution. And, you know, we thought it was the two fire departments working together, but then that didn't seem to happen. So, you know, that's something that has to happen from the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen, and the fire departments. And then, yes, we do have to figure out how to fund it.
Okay. I hope that that happens while I'm on the board. I hope if it's not going to happen this year, because it's obvious that it's not, I certainly hope that what you just laid out happens in the next six months. So when we revisit this again, that we can come up with a solution. Thanks for hearing me.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anybody else, though, out there on the board? Okay. Anything else on the town side? All right, so now if you are done with the town side, we would move on to the Board of Ed. We're all set in the revenue side, right, you guys? That number that you've chosen, seven hundred and fifty thousand policies out of the general fund, is the number that you are comfortable with? It's not going lower, it's not going higher?
This is Bill. I'm, again, reluctantly good with it for this year.
Okay. Everybody else, all good?
Karen Christensen, I'm good with it.
Okay, so the next hurdle would be the Board of Education.
So this is Jason. I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a point or a comment before we discuss the Board of Education. I listened to a lot of comments tonight about this, and there's one thing I think I just need in my mind to clarify. It seems like it was... The fingers are being pointed at this board is the ones that have given the 2% over the last however many years it's been. It has been the voters of the town and the referendum that's given the 2%, not the Board of Finance. I know since I've been on the board, one year we actually proposed, put forward a 4% and it actually passed. All the years we put 4%, 3%, and they failed. So the Board of Finance is not the one that has given the 2%. We have given larger numbers and the referendums have failed three times, and everyone's ended up at 2%. I think that just needs to be clarified. It's not this board. This board in the past has tried to give them more money. And the town residents through referendum have failed the referendums, and that's how we've ended up at 2%. So I think that just needs to be clarified, that this board has in the past tried to support them more than they've received. And I just... That's just a point I want to make before we discuss anything further with them tonight.
Bill, all of the additional...
Barbara Petano, Board of Finance, sorry.
Sorry, Barbara Petano, Board of Finance. So the added appropriations that... I mean, I've only been on the board not quite two years, but I know that we... There was some additional monies provided last year as well, and I think it was in previous years. So that's not being taken into consideration in the 2% calculation, is it?
No. This is Bill, Board of Finance. You are correct. I'm speaking to the actual budget itself that the, you know, that has been referred to. Because the appropriations, people are not speaking to that, and that has been additional money we've done. And I know it's been a fair amount. Last year, we tried to fund textbooks, we funded computers, sports equipment and stuff like that. So, I mean, that's in addition to, but I'm speaking specifically to the 2% that, you know, they say that they've been funded at. You know, it's the voters in town that have not come out to vote to support the referendums that have been put forward to give them more money. And yes, the Board of Finance has reduced the number, trying to get a number that would pass above 2%, but again, the referendum kept failing three times. So I just think that needs to be clarified and spoken through, you know, my part, because, you know, fingers look like they're pointed at us as a board. We don't support them. What we have, and evidently, you know, the year that it passed at 4.35, I think the number was, you know, several years back, you know, those are the numbers that we have put through for them. But yes, we have reduced it to try and get a more, you know, a budget that might pass at 2.5% or whatever, but it failed and they ended up at 2%. So I just feel that needs to be clarified before we speak. And that's not speaking to the additional appropriations that the Board of Education has been given, which I think is fair because we, you know, supported all departments of town through supplemental appropriations. So I think that's, you know, a good additional thing we've been able to do because, you know, we've actually gained money in our general fund as we were able to do that.
Okay, thanks, Bill. All right, so now, as we know, the Board of Ed number has changed. It is... They are requesting twenty-four million, eight eighty-seven, three fifteen, which is a 4.05% increase. We are at twenty-four, six million. It is a difference of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Marie did ask that we relook at the insurance number. In my presentation, I did a conservative number of six hundred thousand. So Amy, I guess, could you take a peek at that real quick and tell us if we're in the right place?
Amy from the Treasurer's Office, I'm not sure. I mean, Christine obviously did her reduction based on the state, but we didn't get a new Board of Ed budget by line items to see what that number is now. But if you compare it, their insurance is about double of the town's, and the town is able to save a hundred thousand dollars with more than thirty thousand dollars just coming from the most recent cut we got from the state rates. And their share was at least double ours. So I'm not sure where Christine's getting her numbers and what that number looks like now to tell you if there's room there, but I can tell you that ours is a reduction of two hundred thousand on about one and a half million dollar health insurance budget.
All right, so yeah, we just got the total 4.05% increase in the twenty-four million number, not where anything added or decreased, correct? I didn't miss anything, right?
No, I have not seen an updated budget. I don't know if anybody's still on, if Kathy's on or any of the Board of Ed members are on.
I don't know. I can't see because PowerPoint's up. So I can't really see.
Carolyn? Board of Finance. I... Bear with me, everyone here. I spent a little bit of time today trying to figure out things with the Board of Education, and honestly, it's quite difficult to grasp what we're even talking about because we don't get whole numbers. We don't get actual numbers. How much is the bottom-line insurance number? How much is the bottom-line? It's really very difficult to figure out where we were, where we came down, where they came down, the seventy thousand in FICA, the insurance. But it's very, very confusing for me. What I did was, I listened to their meeting the other night, and they made some motions about... They have the opportunity this year to roll grant money. That's not a normal thing at all. It's got to do with the COVID situation, where they can roll their Title I, Title II, Title III money over into next year. And they're getting, carrying about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What I decided to do was just kind of go back to the beginning and look at what they had asked for originally from us, way back in the beginning. And they were asking for twenty-five point five million dollars in local funds, and they had two point three million dollars in grant money, which gave them a total budget of twenty-seven point eight million dollars, roughly. And I'm just doing basic math here because I didn't have a lot of time to spend on this. If they take the money that they discussed the other night and they roll that grant money over to next year, they end up with their already new grant money that they anticipate getting. If we gave them everything that they wanted, the twenty-five point five million, and then they roll these grants, they end up at twenty-eight point three million dollars in total funds. If we give them the twenty-four, six that we got to, and they pull over the grant money that they anticipated and the extra money that they can roll, they end up at... They end up about four hundred thousand dollars short of what their original request was. And that's not including their health insurance savings. It's not including the seventy thousand dollars in savings on FICA. So if they intend to roll that grant money over to next year, I'm a little confused as to if they're going to spend... Part of their discussion was they were going to spend local money in order to keep the grant money and roll it. And I honestly am just thinking, if they roll that grant money over, they're very close to what they wanted to begin with, not counting the health insurance reduction, the FICA reduction. So what I'm looking at is that they're able to do their budget as they initially asked for it.
And then some.
And then some, which means they don't have to cut any sports. They don't have to cut anything. They don't have to do any of those things that everybody is very, very concerned with. So...
Noreen, can I interrupt you just for one second? I'm sorry. People seem to think that we can't see the chat box, but we can. I was just letting Noreen finish. Jason, when you get the opportunity, the superintendent is there. She is asking to be unmuted. So if you could do that and then Noreen could finish, please?
Both she and Andy Pickett are already unmuted.
Okay, so Noreen, go ahead and finish, and then we can go from this guy.
So, you know, I'm just looking at the original numbers again because we don't really have figures. You know, it's hard to work off this two hundred thousand dollar number and not know what it is. Going back to what they initially asked for, if they roll that grant money, they're very close to that number for the reduction in the health care and the FICA reduction. So I'm looking at it as the perspective of, right now, they should be able to sustain the budget that they requested. And there should be a little bit of money in there for COVID situations and whatnot, which I know are going to come. And I know that there's going to be the good possibility they're going to come back and need money. So I'm just... I guess I'm trying to just get a handle on what their intent is. If they're going to roll that grant money and they're going to spend local money, or do they want to take the local money that's left over possibly and put it into that contingency fund that we just did? You know, I'm seeing that we're close to the number they wanted without having to cut a whole lot.
Okay, thanks, Noreen. Andy and Christine, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. So right now, the difference between the BOE's request and the Board of Finance's two hundred and fifty-five is just about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So, you know, it's... That's the difference at this point. I will explain the grant piece that we talked about at the Board of Ed meeting Monday night. And I'm going to have Andy speak about the current changes that that has done. So it is unique because of the COVID-19 situation that the federal government granted a waiver that we could roll grants with no caps this year. We've always been able to roll portions, but unlimited amounts. So this year, we are looking to use some of the local funds that we anticipate having available. It's positive that we will have that money right now to pay for what we would have paid for out of a grant. We're then able to roll the grant money, which title one and alliance, which are the... We have just about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We would use that money to keep most of the positions that were on the list for reduction and then look to add some supports for kids next year to address what we anticipate being academic regression. I want to clarify that the positions we're looking to restore with grant money are social workers, academic supports such as our literacy and math coaches, math interventionists, math tutors, and reading interventionists. So we are looking to roll that money. The Board of Ed voted to allow me to do that, so I am moving forward, implementing the budget with that assumption. We have gotten an estimate that we should estimate eighty-three percent of our Title I allocation is what we should assume in COVID-19 relief. That gives us about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I have limited thoughts on what we're going to need because we still, as you folks probably know, we have very little in the way of recommendations or thoughts about what school will look like next year. At minimum, we are talking about a significant level of personal protective equipment because of the proximity that some of our paraprofessionals and related service providers work with some of our students. But we really have no idea where we will end up in that regard. One thing that we were very fortunate in, and we do not have to use some of our grant money and some of our COVID-19 relief for, is technology. And as I have put out to our families and to our staff, we're very lucky that between grants that were written by Ty, our previous tech director, and myself years ago, and then the noted added appropriations from the Board of Finance and the town members over the past few years, we have been well set in terms of technology. So that is a huge benefit to our town that many of the other towns have not had. So we were fortunate to be able to start educating our kids immediately when we got out of school. But that does not negate some of the things that we may need to have in place next year. I will tell you, the state has been very clear that we need to put paramount the mental health of our students and staff, which is why we think it's critical to have the social workers stay on our staff and that we need to prepare for academic supports for our kids. So that's why we're choosing to roll that grant money. It can be used to support academics, attendance, social-emotional learning, and those are appropriate ways for us to use that money for next year. I don't know if anybody has questions about the grant rollover specifically.
Christine, it's Noreen, Board of Finance. So are you in... So are you intending to take that grant money and roll it in order to cover COVID expenses? Things that are missed in addition to COVID? Or are you going to use it?
So.
Cuts that you intended to have to make if your budget was cut?
Well, they're one in the same, quite honestly, because the positions that were primarily on the list for reduction were academic support and social work. So we would be looking to keep them because they will serve the needs of the students that we're anticipating and the state is anticipating will be addressed. You know, we have a custodian on the list to be reduced. We have an administrative position. We have some regular ed instructional staff. Those positions are not being funded by the grant rollover. It's our academic positions and the social worker that will be written into grants for next year with the rollover.
And then one last question. Rolling that money, which, you know, it's $540,000, I think, somewhere in that.
Title I and the Alliance grant allow us to roll 380,000.
The, and then there's the CARES money, which is another.
Well, CARES money at this point, we, the Board of Ed has not allocated. And part of that is we are waiting to see what some of the recommendations are. CARES Act money was, there was a memo, multiple memos that have come out from the State Department of Ed to superintendents talking about the need to use CARES Act funding basically to support any needs that have resulted from the distance learning and reentry. So $160,000 may not go very far, quite honestly.
Okay, so, well, so let me go back to the 380,000 enrolling grant money. And I understand you have needs and I'm not disputing that. When you don't have that $380,000 next year, is it, it's because these are positions, they kind of get embedded in. And I'm just concerned that, you know, next year, we're $380,000 behind from the get-go. And how you anticipate that falling into.
So for, for FY, we, in some ways, we are kicking the can down the road without question, but we're trying to respond to the immediate needs of our students. We know, we already have an increase in the number of families reaching out for emotional support. So we know that that's going to be a need. And there's no doubt we're going to have students with academic needs. And unfortunately, you know, the Board of Ed will have to consider what the budget will look like in FY '22 when we get to the point of being able to deal with FY '22. Right now, the reentry for school year 2021 is really daunting and we need to try and put in as many supports for our kids as we can.
And is there any way you can just give me the bottom line number on the insurance cost?
Yep, Andy Pickett can do that for you because he's got numbers in front of him that I don't necessarily have in front of me at the same time.
Thank you, Andy Pickett, Board of Ed. I just also wanted to clarify regarding the, the question from Mr. Stuza, I believe it was, and followed up with what we were talking about here. As we have been going through the insurance deliberations between the 2.0 plan and the, we kept getting refreshes from Cigna regarding what they would be looking at. And there was a number that they came back with and every time they came back with a number, we adjusted our insurance accordingly. So that the $400,000 and change difference they're talking about was from an iteration of the insurance that was less than the 16%. It was about, I think they came back with an 8%. And that was the, the delta was between that 8% number and where we are now. So that's the, the difference between the 400. That was. Regarding the total insurance right now, if you just give me a second here. So the total insurance for local appropriation only is $1,949,196. We do have grants that support the insurance in the tune of $544,000. So the total in health insurance for the Board of Ed with the 2.0 plan is $2,493,196.
Andy, in the original budget, was it, I just want to make sure I'm looking at, at the right one. Was it $3,267?
Correct and change, yes. That was a 16%, correct.
And I want to clarify, that's based on the staff we have currently. Yep. Geraldine, can I ask, did you get to see the update that I had emailed earlier?
If it came, if it came after this morning, no, because I literally came back, came home from work and clicked onto the meeting.
Okay, yep, we had sent an update earlier.
Maybe not all of us were able to go in. So do you want to kind of review it really quickly or?
A lot of it spoke to the issue of the grant rollover that explained that, although I'm glad Noreen was able to be on our meeting last night because she probably got a much more detailed description. So there was a big chunk about that, the fact that we had a reduction in, I want to pull it up so I can just look at it. Hold on, please. Okay, so what it talked about was that we have, the Title I cap rollover is allowing us to keep literacy coach, reading interventionist. We do have a waiver on the Title II carryover. So because part of that grant allows for class size reduction, we may be able to use that for some paraprofessional support to address some of the academic needs. The Alliance grant carryover, we're looking to keep the social worker and our math coach, among other positions. We, because we found out yesterday that the spring athletic season is canceled, we are happy to say we will be able to reduce the cost for running our athletic program next year by approximately $30,000 because we have unused athletic equipment that can be used. We have some transportation costs that are offset. We still have funds in our ref pay program that can help offset next year. So, you know, that will come down. The CARES Act funding on that summary that I sent, I am suggesting we use all the funds to provide services needed to return to school. We don't have a final number on that yet, but again, we were told to estimate 83% of our Title I allocation. And then I just included the things that I already said about what the state recommends we use that CARES Act for. Some of the things that are still outstanding, the transportation renegotiations. In the executive order, it does state that cooperation is requested by both parties to enter negotiations. That is moving toward the cooperative level of negotiation. So there has been no final decision on renegotiation of any bus contracts to this point. We still not, of course, we haven't finished the year. Our buildings are still standing, so we don't know if there will be added expenditure for anything that could happen with buildings. And then we are not sure if we will have an expenditure this fiscal year for personal protective equipment. We don't know what's the status for summer school. In a conference call with the Commissioner of Education today, it was stated that they should have guidance for us around summer camps and extended year programming for special education somewhere around May 15. So if we are going to be permitted to run any type of summer school program, we will need equipment, personal protective equipment, if we can even find it, to have our students in the building this summer, so that could be an added expense. That's what the update basically said, but it was in a nice table. It was prettier than how, just, but you, you can have it for reference later.
Thank you very much.
Noreen had had the question, I'm sorry, Geraldine.
Yeah.
Question, I think it was Noreen, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, had had the question about what we anticipate carrying over. I can tell you what we think right now, based on things that are continuing to move, if you can put all of those caveats on it. And I think you all know that our potential for carrying over changes day to day and we still have six weeks, well, maybe it's four weeks of school left and we could have students with special needs come in. Even though we are doing distance learning, any of our specialized programs, the day programs that our high need special ed students attend, we are still having to pay tuition because they are providing distance learning for the students that we have enrolled there. So if a student moved in from out of district, which we actually have had occur since the closure and they attend an out of district program, we are required to pick up that tuition. So until June 18th, I cannot rule out that we would have some type of special ed increase. So we're looking at about $130,000 right now. But that has no, the bus contract renegotiations are not factored into that in any way because I do not know the outcome of that at this point.
Any other questions or anybody else?
Geraldine, Noreen Farmer.
Yeah.
Board of Finance. Christine, $130,000 that you're anticipating, and I understand it'll be fluid, that, that is money that could go into this contingency fund and then the rollover of the grants as well.
So.
Where does that put you?
Okay, but you're asking me to do math right now. If I could.
Well, in the, in the big picture of your budget, you know.
I can do that right on the screen if you want to see it.
Yeah, I can do it. It's about $510,000 between the grants and the rollover. So the grants are allowing us to keep some of the positions that would have had, rolling over the grants allows us to get to the point where there is a $287,000 difference between our current request and the current Board of Finance recommendation. The $130,000 carryover is not factored into that. There are a lot of things that may need to, that may come into account that we may need to utilize that money for. I don't know that we will, but certainly, you know, we don't know what the outcome of any special education issues could be from students who have been educated at home. We have been told by the Special Ed Bureau Chief from the State Department of Ed to plan for a, and I quote, "robust" summer school program for our special ed kids. Our special ed summer school generally runs about $120,000 in a normal year. And I'm not sure what robust would do to that. So, you know, I certainly would not be recommending to the Board of Ed that we assume any carryover into our regular operating budget from the get-go.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Comments, concerns?
So if, if the board were interested in trying to get them to what their current budget request was and they can roll $130,000, the difference for that would be roughly 150.
This is Bill, Board of Finance. This is a tough decision because there's a lot of different things to play into decisions here. I think I can go with $150,000 increase. I've thought about it for a couple of weeks now. You know, I appreciate you guys, the Board of Finance, Board of Education, negotiating your, your healthcare benefits. That was huge and some of the other, you know, findings we found here and there. You know, as I said earlier, you know, it's not this board that is overall giving the 2%. I think it's, it's, you know, it's the voters in town that have, have voted for the referendums that, or failed the referendums that have given you the 2%. So, you know, I don't want to call this a makeup year, but.
Please don't.
No.
Geraldine Corso, Board of Finance. You know, one of the comments there was, you know, give 5% and make up for past cuts. And that really bothered me because, yes, we got elected by people and there, there's no question. We got elected to watch out for everybody and I'm not disagreeing with you about the 150, you know that. But it's just, this isn't the year to make up anything because people don't have, they had their right to vote taken away by a disease, not by, you know, or an awful virus, whatever you want to call it. So, I mean, the point we need to do is to try to be fair to everybody and that's just not easy. But it isn't a year to, to do it because we can. That's just wrong.
No, and I agree. That's where, that's where I'm sitting here being torn by is, like I said, I, but I do feel that you're going to have, you know, some extra expenses going into next year. And I didn't, you know, to be honest with you, sitting here as I sit, I didn't even thought of personal protective equipment as being a requirement going forward. You know, that's, so with that, I guess I'll make a motion to go to $24,750,000 for the Board of Education budget number for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so Bill has put forward a motion for $24,750,000. Is there a second?
Tom Lancer, Board of Finance, I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This is Barbara Patano, Board of Finance. Andy, if you're still on, is the, is the current budget still reflecting the $120,000 loss in the cafeteria?
Hang on, I'm trying to unmute him. Okay, well, how about Christine? You want to ask Christine? Oh, there we go.
Talk anymore.
I don't know. Andy Pickett, Board of Ed, it currently does. But again, I guess I would remind that, you know, the monthly and so updates that we have been providing to both the Board of Ed and Board of Finance, that the changes that have been made by the consultant have been showing improvements. But it's, I want to say it's kind of a, this, this factoring in a contingency was also recommended by the auditor because of the fact that it's got to come from somewhere. And so we are between the combination of the recommendations made and with that recommendation and acknowledgement that we, as of right now, need to come up with another.
need to come up with another funding source, and that other funding source being a local appropriation. We felt it was sound, and it is sound budgeting to budget that contingency. Hopeful that, again, that it will start to turn things around with those recommendations, but a just friendly reminder to everybody, those recommendations have been implemented mid-year. So we, to expect the turnaround on 120 some odd thousand dollar, you know, running deficit that has occurred over several years is a daunting task, but we are doing it.
Yeah, Barbara Petano, I appreciate that it was done mid-year, which is why hey, look, I don't need to be milk and mice on a $25 million budget, believe me, but that one just continues to stick with me, and several other members of the Board as well, that it's, it's just hard to budget a loss. So if we were doing it at the halfway point, would it make more sense to budget a loss of 60,000 instead of the full 120,000?
Andy Puckett, Board of Ed, I know we don't want to go back and debate the merits in one way or the other, but my, when, if you look at statewide, and I think Christine might have shared this with you in one of her updates as well for the Board of Finance, that it is not uncommon for food service operations to need supplemental support from local appropriations. And I would also say, if you look at it from all the studies regarding breakfast, lunch, and the impact that has on education, you know, I'd almost look at the $120,000 not as covering a deficit, but as an investment in the education, because food service is crucial to the success and the well-being that our students have when they come to East Windsor schools.
Just, this is Christine DeBarr, Superintendent of Schools. The, in a conversation with State Department of Ed, when we first started, when I first became superintendent, we started addressing the food service deficit. They did share that approximately 50% of district-run food service programs in the state require assistance from the town.
This is Billboard Finance, and just as a point of clarification, I thought at the beginning of this year, we were zero on this fund, because last year we did a supplemental appropriation of $91,000 change. So we did start this current school year at zero balance in that account, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct?
Correct, and, oh, Andy Puckett, Board of Ed, that is correct. But I would say, if you were to look at the previous years, what those deficits had, it's always started, and for all intents and purposes, close to zero, because it's been in a deficit, so we've had to do appropriations from within the local budget to offset the revolving account deficits by reclassing expenses in previous years out of food service into the local budget when the funds were available. But you are correct, Bill.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. When you spoke earlier, I thought you said that we started the year with a deficit, and I thought that just made me remember that, I thought we zeroed it at the start of the year, but maybe I just misunderstood what you said, my error.
No problem.
Christine DeBarr, Superintendent of Schools, and clarify, we're not pleased that the food service program has the level of deficit that it has either, and we're working very diligently with the food service staff and our consultants to address it. I think it's very challenging to judge our level of improvement in the part of the year since March 16th. But we do expect to make additional changes going forward into next year, and expect to see more positive change. So we're actively addressing it, and certainly have no desire to continue having the program run in the deficit, but keeping in mind that half the district-run food service programs in the state do require town support. So while it's not a situation we're pleased to be in, it is not unusual in any way for that to be the case. Okay, Barbara Petano, Board of Finance. So Christine, I know that you guys have been working on this, and that was why I brought it up, is that it just seems that if we're working toward that, then we should be reflecting, working toward that in the budget ask. So it, me, the 120,000 was, was a big number, given that, you know, it's not like we're beating a dead horse, you guys are, you did bring in a consultant, you have put some action in place. It just seems that you're budgeting the, you know, not to make any improvement, but you're saying like, working toward making improvement, that was my point. Yeah, I guess, Barbara, from our perspective, if we look at trends in the food service, and we want to budget with the intention of not requiring an added appropriation next year, that's how we built the budget. Obviously, we all built our budgets last December, but we built it with intention of having enough of an, of a contingency to cover any deficit. We certainly hope that that is not the state of the food service department, and we'll be in a position to build next year's budget with much less of a contingency.
Okay, anybody else? Questions, concerns? Still looking at stuff?
So, Carolyn, this is Jason, if I could just piggyback on a comment that Bill made earlier about the need for the school district to have PPE. I was on a call this afternoon with, a statewide emergency management call with Governor Lamont, Commissioner Lehman from DECD and others, and that's definitely coming. So that's, and that's something that's going to affect the Board of Education, and it's going to affect town government. So you can categorize that in the list of expenditures that we're going to have to be prepared for in, in the next fiscal year, on both sides of the budget.
All right, any other discussion? If you look, Jason put that number in for you. So bringing it to, if I can see, really tiny, Jason, does that say 2.87% budget increase?
That's the general fund bottom line. The, the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed budget would be 24,750,000, an increase of 831,000 for 3.47%. And the general fund total, well, I mean, which one do you want? Is it, do you want the BOE one, or do you want the general fund total?
Well, I'm looking at you guys too, town, BOE, and then the general fund.
Yeah, so that's all here. Town government total is 1.98%, which is 14,565,526, for an increase of 283,060. Capital improvements is 1.94% for an increase of 1,014,668. Debt service is an increase of 1.98% for 16,588,059. The Board of Education is a budget of 24,750,000 for a 3.47% increase. And the general fund total would be 41,338,059 for an increase of 1,153,162, and 2.87%.
Did that, when you put that in, does it put over to your revenue page to see what the mill rate is?
Yes, it does. So the mill rate would, could be going up 0.53 mills, or 1.54% for a town mill rate of 34.78 mills.
Thanks, sorry, it's really tiny.
Jay, it's Amy, can you go up farther to see what the tax increase will be?
2.56%. Well, that's the tax levy, did you want that, or the total tax revenue?
No, the tax levy.
All right, thanks, it was just really hard to see, I appreciate that.
You want the revenue side, or the expenditure side?
Um, I guess we should go back to expenditures for now. All right, so we, we, you did make your, we have lost track. Billy, you made your motion, right?
Yes, I did.
And Tom seconded it, all right, so we're still in discussion phase. Anything else from anybody? All right, so, all those in favor, Karen Christensen?
No.
Tom Lancer?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
No.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
No.
All right, so that motion did not pass, bringing us back to where we started. Would somebody else like to start over?
Tom Talamini, Board of Finance, I'd like to make the motion, 24, Board of Ed, total number 24,700,000.
Is there a second to Mr. Talamini's 24,700,000?
I'll second it.
Bill Sign, Board of Finance, second? All right, discussion?
Bill, what was your motion?
It was Tom, and it was 24.7.
I know Tom's is 24.7, but what was, what was Bill's?
24.750, Jason's changing the number on the thing, I think, for you right now.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, so, all those in favor of 24.7 on the Board of Ed? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lancer?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes at 24.7. Making it, oof, that's tiny. 3.27 on the Board of Ed. One at 2.75, can you pop back to the revenue, Jason? Then that would make the mill rate at 34.72, mill rate change of 0.47. So now, you guys, this is it. You need to take a few minutes, look at everything, both on the town side, Board of Ed side, your revenue side, and if you're comfortable, I need somebody to make a motion encompassing the budget dollars and the mill rate. And Amy, is there anything else you want? Usually it's budget dollars and mill rate, right?
This is Amy from the Troopers Office, yes, that's all we need.
Okay. Total budget with the mill rate. But take a few minutes, look at everything, because again, a lot of weight on your shoulders. We would have much preferred this to go out to the, to the taxpayer to vote on it. I think it would have looked a lot different. But give yourself a few minutes, and we'll go from there. And whenever anybody's ready to make a motion, go right ahead, because I can only see four.
This is Billboard Finance, I will, we approve the 2020, 2021 County East Windsor budget at 41,288,059 in a mill rate of 34.72, 34, 34.72.
Okay, is there a second?
Karen Christensen, I second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lancer?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, guys, I know this was not an easy budget cycle, and I thank you very much for your time and all your efforts. And now we need a, well, there's Board member comments, but I think we really had enough of that. Upcoming meeting dates is Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Now, there is a motion to adjourn.
Barbara Petano, Board of Finance, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Karen Christensen, I second it.
Okay, all those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
Tom Lancer?
Yes.
Barbara Petano?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Time, Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, we are all set, good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night, all.